Good evening, everybody. This is Nadine Grannig. I am with Save Our Schools Arizona as the tribal outreach coordinator. Welcome back to our Indigenous perspective series. Today, we're going to be talking about school board service for high density schools. And I'm not sure we're gonna have a full panel tonight. So we're still waiting for at least another person to join us this evening, but we're gonna go ahead and get started to respect your time. As well as the panelists that did show up so far. So our guest tonight, who has come in to join us is Joe Vaya Junior. From the Navajo Nation. And he is from Kanta, Arizona. He attended K-12 in the Kanta Unified School District and graduated from Monument Valley High School in 2000. Then he attended the fifth year of high school at Phillips Exeter Academy in Exeter, New Hampshire. And graduated a second time. So I'd like to hear a little bit more about that as we go on today. Following his post-secondary education, Joe completed an 18-year career in banking. And then returned to the Navajo Nation from rural Arctic Alaska. Joe has volunteered with many organizations, including the United Way and Habitat for Humanity. He has also served on multiple boards and commissions. Currently, Joe serves as a board member with the Kanta Unified School District. Community Action Coordinator with Save Our Schools Arizona. And he is the CEO and founder of Water Peak Partners LLC. A company aimed at solving the water issues on the Navajo Nation and worldwide. And if you've joined us before, you know that that's an area of interest for me as well. It's a little bit about me. I am the former Director of Indian Education with the Arizona Department of Education. And a member of the Laguna Pueblo in New Mexico. I was served at the department for almost 18 years. And like Joe in banking, about the same period of time. And I started my own business last year called Sun Clan Consulting. And one of the community projects we do has to do with bringing water, good clean drinking water to the Navajo Nation. Among other reservations. So Joe and I have a little bit in common there. And we also both worked for Save Our Schools and Save Our Schools has brought Indigenous perspectives to you tonight. So I'd like to thank our sponsor, Save Our Schools for that. And we're still waiting for Desiree Fowler. She's the School Board President for Page Unified School District. But I'm gonna go ahead and give Joe a little bit of an opportunity to introduce himself and say a little bit more about himself. Than what I just read to you. Thank you, Joe.
All right. Thank you, Nadine. Well, yeah. Chee Joseph by you, initiate, but that means like Twitter cheating, but she's she not getting that this change last year to Chanel. So I grew up in Kianta, Arizona. And a lot of people say it's the gateway to the Monument Valley region. It's a tourist community. A lot of the money now is coming from the tourism. That we, we get a lot of the people that wanna travel to Southwest. They're going to at some point travel through Kianta. Prior to that, the, the community was, is a thriving community. But a large majority of the economy was dependent on, especially the Navajo Nation. A lot of the revenues that it was receiving was from the coal mining industry. So Peabody Energy Group had two mines, Kianta Mine and the Peabody Coal Mine near Kianta. And a large majority of the people on the reservation were in some way employed directly or indirectly from that economy. And Kianta, it was one of the communities that benefited a lot from the revenues that were being generated directly from that industry. And of all the 110 chapters across the reservation, Kianta actually was one of the communities that had, had a unique status. That's different from the rest of the, the communities across the reservation in that they have a township. And the township is, is its own sub-governing entity. It works with the tribe, but a lot of their own royalties, taxes that they're generating was able to directly be put back into the community. So in a way, a lot of the red tape that a lot of the other chapter houses may need to go through, through getting maybe funding aid help. Approvals from the, from the council, from, from the legislation, the legislature in Windaroc. A lot of that was circumvented by having that, you know, self-governing community. So I grew up in that community, growing up from, I'm a product of the, the public schools there in the community. My dad was a coal miner and he was an electrician. And I have a sister. She's 16 years older than me, so I didn't grow up with her in the household. So it felt like I was an only child for most of my.
Were you a surprise?
I guess so, yeah. And the, the experience that I had was really a wonderful one there on the, there in Kianta. And I'm, for, for the longest time, I wanted to come back to the community. I want to give back in some way, shape or form. And I'm finally having an opportunity and it's, it's a great experience. But that's, that's kind of a little tidbit about where I came from and, and I can share more about the Exeter experience too here in a bit.
Okay, yeah. As I read your bio, of course, your bio was a little longer than what I just read. I thought, well, you have had a lot of experience in various areas, which makes you a very interesting person to talk to, of course. I just heard from Desiree. She said her internet is spotty, but she's trying to get on here. Which is great. So, excuse me, I don't usually text while I'm doing these.
Me, okay, so video real fast. Go ahead. I'll remember here. My camera will come right on in a minute.
Okay, I am going to go ahead and read some, or give an introduction or a little bit of background about what it means or, yeah, what it means to be a high-density school. So you know, the session is about serving schools or on a school board or a governing board for a school district that maybe, you know, has more than one. High-density school. And a high-density school means that the school has 25% or greater Native American enrollment. And so that's just a category that is, is tracked by the Arizona Department of Education. Not just for Native Americans, but for other subgroups. And I used to do that. So I know I used to do the annual report. And so we would categories or do it, reporting on high-density schools versus non, non-high-density schools. And so that typically means that the school is either on or very near a reservation, of course, which makes sense because that's where the native students live. And so today, for this discussion, I chose school board members who serve the schools on the Navajo Nation. And there are approximately 120 high-density schools in Arizona. So the majority of them though are on the Navajo Nation and are in Navajo and Coconino Counties. So that's just a little bit of data, a little bit of information for you. And as one might imagine, there are unique challenges and opportunities working on school boards or serving high-density schools. And one example is that because by virtue of having this, these many, that many Native American students enrolled, they are eligible for additional federal funding. That is designed to help Indigenous students academically, but also in other ways like culture and language. So that's just a little bit of an explanation or some information about high-density schools. And so my first question for Joe then is, what attracted you to serving on a school board? And we know why you came back to Kanta, but why, why this particular type of service?
Well, prior to coming, prior to 2019, when I was still in banking. One of the, I would say the, the most meaningful part of working in my job in the banking sector was being able to volunteer, integrate myself into the communities that I was working in. So being able to volunteer with different organizations, being able to spend time in the community to really understand the needs of the community. And I know from like a corporate standpoint, a business profit-minded standpoint. You definitely want to make sure that you, in, in, in meeting the needs of the community that you're serving. And along with federal state legislative responsibilities when it comes to banking and laws that are related to banking and community lending. You really need to make sure that you're doing it in a responsible way. So having a group of people, a team focusing on really connecting with those communities. Is critical to the vitality of your, your business, your business model. Making sure that you're, you're, you're meeting the unique needs of, of that community that you're doing business in. So my role initially was, was, was as a banker. And I got to work with, with businesses as a business banker, business lending to a lot of small businesses. And what I saw in the communities that I worked in stemming from my early career in Los Angeles, downtown Los Angeles. The needs in those communities to a broader area away from Los Angeles in the inland empire. So for some of those people that don't know, the, if you think about the Los Angeles region, you have this thriving community of businesses, international, far-reaching. So a lot of these people, they're gonna have very different needs. They can have very different businesses than someone who is in the inland empire region. Think of Pomona, Ontario. We'll, we'll, we'll say like, for those people that are familiar with like Ranch Utkumunga Riverside. You have these communities that are still very urban, but they have more farmland agriculture. But still, that's not the type of, that, that's still a very urban environment for someone who's coming from a very rural community like Kianta. Or let's say the Arctic region like Cottibee. So later in my career, I moved closer back home to Flagstaff, Arizona. And in Flagstaff, I got the chance to volunteer work with places like United Way, Habitat for Humanity. The, the volunteer tax services that some of the banking institutions were able to provide for people of lower income. So those experiences really kind of shaped and molded my, my thinking behind community service. Coming from a corporate social responsibility mindset. So you're, you're thinking, okay, my job is lending to accounts, it's credit services, it's investment services. And when I got closer to home in Flagstaff, I started to do more volunteer financial literacy. I guess a little, not courses, but I was able to go to the, the, the schools there around Flagstaff. And connect with these school districts that had more Native American students. And something I, I started to realize was getting kind of closer to my connection to home, coming from the reservation. I realized the, the minorities in these classrooms and the kids that are really struggling to understand, let's say, financial concepts. You're seeing, I, I was starting to see more and more children, kids, families that, you know, were minorities. The, the Native Americans, the, the people who represent the Latino communities. And then Flagstaff, I never realized that there is such a large community of Latino community people in, in places like Flagstaff, Arizona. And I was able to volunteer with the, the, the Mexican consulate. When I was still in banking and I was able to help them with the people in the community who only spoke Spanish. And a little bit about me, when I was in California and I was going to Harvey Metcalfe's Engineering School, really nice community in Claremont. I couldn't afford, my family couldn't afford to have me stay on campus after my first year because it was really expensive in that community. So I moved just a few blocks south of the freeway. And I was no longer in Claremont, but it was just right across the freeway. But you go from an area that has a lot of affluency to an area where some of the people in the stores and the little shopping malls, they only spoke Spanish. So I, I was living in that community of people. I didn't know Spanish. But when I needed to go to laundromat or I needed to go to the grocery store and I was living in that area, I had to learn Spanish. So fast forwarding back to Flagstaff, I was having fun volunteering and assisting the, the community with people who only spoke Spanish. And I'm working for the bank. But now I'm able to talk to people in the, and, and help kids, families who are struggling with basic financial literacy. And they're not only native, but they're from the Spanish-speaking communities. So that experience really shaped and molded me into thinking, you know what, at some point, I do wanna move home. I wanna really help out with the, the, the public schools and that helped me experience what I've experienced in my life. So I took a longer route to education. So I guess where I'm going is, I didn't exactly just go to college, finish college. I'm still in school right now and I, I'm, I'm learning a lot based on the experiences that I've had. Those have helped me have greater empathy for families that come from families that, you know, do not, or maybe first generation college, university families. And my parents didn't go to college. They, my dad, his education, both of their education, you know, is high school. And my dad went to the military and when he came out, he went into the electrical field. So for me, I wanted to go into the same industry. But I wanted to take it a little bit further and go into something that might be like the engineering field. And that's what originally I was going for and I ended up in banking. But I realized that we definitely need role models. We definitely need people that come back, have real-life experiences, all different types. Some people can go to school, get an education, go right into medical school or go into some professional careers. And or some don't, you know, some find a different path. Maybe they don't even go to college or universities, but they have some really nice experiences. Maybe they create some businesses and they come back to the reservation. They share that with the kids. I want to be part of that to let kids know that there's options. And I guess I'll talk about this in a little bit. My experience in Alaska and the Arctic was something that was phenomenal, something that was a big risk-taking. And I thank my wife for giving me the opportunity to pick us up there.
I thought you're gonna say, I thank my wife for forgiving me for taking me.
Yes, yes, yes. But that's kind of in a nutshell.
Yeah, that, like I said, you've, you've had a lot of experiences from reading your bio. I, I could see that. And some of ours are similar. I, I had a career in banking for a short time as well. And I've been to Alaska. I didn't live there, but I've lived in, in France, you know, and I've lived in a lot, in several different states in, in the United States. So it's really true. All of that comes into play when you start to your service. However, you're serving your community, it all comes into play and teaches you a lot of things that you can then pass on to your, your own community members. But thank you for sharing that snippet of, of your life that, you know, like you said, in a nutshell, there's much more. I would love to welcome Desiree, who made it. Hopefully her internet will stay connected. So Desiree, I know you came in in the middle of Joe's answer to my first question. So he has had an opportunity to tell the audience a little bit more about, or about himself. So I'd like to give you a chance to introduce yourself and, and just share whatever you feel like in a few minutes. And welcome.
Thank you. Yeah. Oh, it's, oh, it's sun initially. Hello. And thank you for the invitation, first of all. And Joe, great to meet you virtual, virtually here on Zoom. I'm excited to see you at the upcoming ASBA events coming up. But um, my name is Desiree Fowler and I serve on the Page Unified School District Governing Board. I am, this is actually my second term, my fifth, completing my fifth year. And I've served as a board president two years in my first term. And this year, board clerk for the past year and a half. And also just recently taking over as board president. So I also serve on the Arizona School Board Association Executive Secretary. And also for the Hispanic Native American Indian Caucus Media Past President. And I also serve on the, oh my goodness, Asia Impact Aid. There's so many things that I'm involved in. But I think the important thing is being able to advocate for Native American communities, schools and rural, rural. Mainly it's rural communities and borderline schools such as Page. Page is borderline to the Navajo Nation. And it's been an awesome journey to be able to advocate for children. In a nutshell there, sorry, I'm leaking it really briefly.
I know. Well, when you reach a certain level of experience, whether it's age, like me, you reach a certain age, you, you just have a lot of experience or you just, you know, do what you guys have done. I mean, you have definitely been impactful in a, in a variety of ways in, in terms of service. So it's not for, for all of us. I think it's not just about having a job and earning a income and, you know, nothing wrong with that. Cause we kind of have to do that to support ourselves and our families. But to go beyond that, I think is really an Indigenous thing. Not that other cultures or communities don't have that, but I was always taught and brought up to, you know, it's like you serve your community. You do what you can to give back to the community that has allowed you to get to where you, you are. And Joe articulated that earlier. So thank you both for your service. And I have a warning for you. When you get to be my age, you're gonna be really tired from it. But it's always, it's very fulfilling as well. So as you mentioned, Desiree, you, you just recently became a board president. So I had asked Joe what attracted him to be, to serving on a board. So you can share that, you know, why you wanted to serve on a school board or a governing board. But how is, how is it different being the board president to being just a regular board member?
Oh, wow. Um, let me go back to your first question, why I chose to serve on our school board. I've been a parent volunteer for a majority of my kids' oh gosh, my oldest twin boys are 25 now. So I've been a stay-home mom for 17 years and majority of the time I was just a parent volunteer, just a parent volunteer, remember that. But in reality, I thought it was very important for me to be very involved in my kids' life. I was raised by my grandmother who had a fourth, I'm sorry, my grandmother had a ninth grade education. My Chee had a fourth grade education. So my grandmother's biggest thing was always education and I really was inspired by my grandmother. She has impacted my life as a young lady, as a child and nothing, she never made excuses or never put any barriers up to say, I can't. And she always had a, I can do, you know, that will to always get me from point A to B. So that was my biggest inspiration was my grandmother. And growing up, I knew that I wanted to be just like my grandmother and be that involved with my children's life. So for 17 years, I was a stay-home mom volunteering. And I got to psych, I mean, psych council PBIS for the Page High School. And one day I got invited to possibly give an interest to Indian Education Committee, IEC. For the Page Unified School District, representing Coppermine Chapter House. So that's where a lot of my advocacy kind of started. And for three years, I would, we would listen to the superintendent come to our meetings, committee meetings and say, the school board decided this, the school board approved this. And it was kind of hard because the majority of us are representing, you know, chapter communities in our area. And you have board members that all live in Page. And so I, one day it just kind of dawned on me, why are board members making all these decisions when they all live in Page? And don't realize the impact it is on the Navajo Reservation or, you know, just students that live on the reservation. So I decided I wanted to try something new and put my name in the hat to run for school board. And so ever since then, it's been, I call it a roller coaster, right? It's, it's, it's been interesting, but.
Imagine.
Yes. But going to your question about board president, my first year on the school board, I thought, okay, I'm gonna learn the loops. And hopefully get to understand what school board work is really about. I honestly didn't have a choice the second year because I was nominated and elected as board president my second and third year. And then now, I mean, I felt like I really had to hit the ground running, understanding what the role of the board president meant to me. But it is definitely a different journey as it is different from being just a regular board member. I believe that your role is heavily impacted in so many ways. It's like having a second job, finding a balance between your birth life, personal life and school board life. And a lot of times I spend my lunch or even after schools, or I'm sorry, after work at the district office. But it's a lot of communicating between myself, the superintendent and also his executive assistant. But it also is, I don't know. I mean, I feel like I'm at the district office more than I need to be sometimes. But it is important to be there in person. Oh gosh, versus being there virtually. But yeah, it's, it's been a journey, a good journey.
Well, good. At least the bottom line is it's been a good one.
Yes.
So yeah, with all the challenges, et cetera. So Joe, you're new to serving on a school board, right? In Kianta. This is a new role for you.
Yeah.
So how have your expectations been met or have they? I mean, what's, what is the difference between what you were expecting to experience and what you're actually going through as a school board member?
I, I would like to say that I, I knew that it was going to be, I was gonna probably be over my head. Because a lot of the people that I know, and I should say that, I, I wanna thank the people that you recommended me to, to consider being on the school board. Because I originally wasn't thinking about it, but I was participating in a lot of the school events. And I was doing a lot of volunteer work because that was my mindset coming from a kind of like a corporate social responsibility point of view. But I realized because I have a four-month-old now, but didn't at the time that I decided to run. I, I also have a four-year-old daughter and she was three at the time when I ran. And I realized I wanted to make sure that when they grow up, I want them to have a great experience as, as I did when I was growing up. So I was trying to think and connect, did I ever attend any school board events when I was a student? Was there ever a time that I was called upon or was, was brought into the board? And I do remember there was a time and when during my high school years, when there was, there was an event where something controversial with maybe one of the teaching subjects was like an AP English class and some of the reading material was, was not recommended. However, a lot of the, the books that were being recommended were books that the students were going to see when they took their AP exams or they were, they were going to be asked to talk about some of these books, these subjects. And it was controversial. And a number of the students were brought into school board meeting to talk about what it meant for them to not have that taken away from them. And what they felt they were learning. So I remembered, why, why were the kids called upon to go to that meeting? Why were the parents, you know, not, some of them were angry for and against, you know, these topics? And then I realized my whole concept and idea of what the public school system was. Concept and idea of what the public school system was. Is heavily influenced by the decisions that are being made by those school board members in those communities. And if you don't have maybe inadequate cross-section of people representing that community. You may have students that may be of a drastic disadvantage and I'll talk about this more about my, my exeter experience, but. As I got. To my higher grades, I realized it's so important for me to experience as much as possible so that way when I'm. Going to college, this is before I was, I graduated from Maimon Valley High School, I was, I was worried because I had, I had. Experienced these summer programs at some of these um schools in New England. And the students that were there, the caliber of kids, the. The, the way the school system was different, the things that they were exposed to, it was so advanced. And I was worried because I was thinking, you know what? I don't want to go to a good school and struggle. Uh, I was starting to think about that and I became aware of that. So as a board member, I realized. I want to make sure that my experience i- is gonna be one where I'm gonna be able to help. Make decisions that are going to um prevent kids from being at. As many disadvantages as possible, I want to minimize that. I know I'm not gonna be able to do everything. But I want to make sure that when those topics come up, there is sufficient information and maybe I'm provided with enough training to. Uh, to help make those decisions. With that said. I would like to say that when I got on as a school board member, there were so many acronyms, there were so many concept discussions that I had. No idea about. I, I, I'm not coming from uh an educational background, coming from.
Yeah.
The private sector.
Yeah, it has its own language for sure.
Yes, and I.
And we speak acronym- acronyms.
And every meeting I had questions, I didn't know, I didn't have enough information, I didn't have the training. I had so many questions and I remember people at the board meetings getting kind of upset with me because they're like. This meeting would have been, you know, over within one hour, but here we are, you know, like four or five hours later, answering your questions, you know. You need to do more work on your side during the work session and then I'm like, alright, I do realize that maybe this is a little ridiculous, but. My, my, my expectations um were, were, it's, it's a steep learning curve. And I think if anyone wants to do this in the future, they need to know that they're either, they're. They need to be really aware, participating in these meetings already, or if they're not from that area. There's gonna be a lot of concepts, there's gonna be a lot of learning and there's a lot of people in the schools who. You know, are gonna be unhappy with, with certain things and they're gonna come to you and you're gonna hear people from. All different backgrounds that you don't know, that are going to, you know, be heavily opinionated on different subject that. You may not even know anything about and then you need to figure that out on your own and you need to go to the school, ask questions. And during the time of COVID, that was almost impossible because I wanted to go to the different departments, I wanted to meet people. I want to understand what different roles were, but we couldn't really do that. So. I was at a great disadvantage there as well, so my expectations weren't being met there. But at the same time, I was being made very well by people in the community that I. I needed to learn more, so, but I was okay with that because I'm, you know, comfortable getting a lot of um. Feedback from people coming from the banking sector and.
Well, that's good that you're open to, uh, I'm sure you're getting criticism, you're getting opinions, you're getting people in your face, all those challenges.
Yeah, Nadine, I just want to say something real quickly, um, right now, I'm in, at the Casino Royale. I'm staying here for this week because I'm attending the National Indian Impacted Schools Association Conference. At the Harrah's, how you say it?
Eras? Yeah, I used to work at Harrah's in Tahoe.
Oh, nice. Well, this week we have a big agenda of a lot of things. I'm learning about impact aid for schools, so.
Good, good for you. There's a lot to learn with impact aid. So, Desiree, you've been on a, a school board for a number of years now. And uh, our governing board and um, can you tell us what, if anything, has changed over the years? About being on a school board?
Oh wow, um.
Governing board. Oh, has anything changed?
No, I think it is, um. Honestly, I felt like at the beginning when I started. Attending the Arizona School Board Association Trainings and Conference, understanding the logistics of. School boardsmanship and just learning the do's and the don'ts, um. To where Arizona School Board Association is currently at now, there's just a lot, a lot has changed. I mean, the new hype is was more so. You know, equity, inclusion and diversity, so it's good, you know, that we're turning into that direction. But um, school board definitely has changed, wow. You know, a lot of things um that you just hear in. Not rural, but urban school districts as far as like Maricopa, you know, there's like the um protests and. What else? You know, just big, big key issues that are currently happening in the valley. I never thought I would find myself in that situation here at our own school. In our school district, so that was kind of a reality to see that, wow, it is, it can happen and it is possible to see. That these things can happen in our school district, so I mean, it's been, I guess. A challenge, but also at the same time, it's really about working together as a board and. Getting ourselves to understand the direction that we are going as a board, as um. In our district and really. Advocating for our students and realities, always our students, so, yeah. But I must, can I, Joe, I'd like to advise you, attend as many ASBA conference and trainings as you can. And I appreciate that you are currently at the NISA conference. I wanted to be there, but it wasn't possible with my schedule this time around, but there's so much. Information that you can get from NISA and I hope that you also um get a chance to attend the. What is it, Spring NAFIS Conference in Washington DC, but yeah. Good luck.
I think he'll, he'll hang in there. Right attitude, um, yeah, I've presented it as the conferences before and so I would love to do that again as well, so. You know, we, we, between the three of us, we have different perspectives that, that I think are good uh to share with people. Um, so. One of the questions I was gonna ask you, Desiree, was for people who are considering being on a school board. Um, you know, what advice would you give them? So you, you kind of just mentioned it right there. I mean, Joe's already on one, but he's new. Um, and hopefully the challenges that you're talking about aren't gonna discourage anybody from serving.
Yeah.
Um, but it sounds like they're not, it's not for the faint of heart or people who, you know, just wanna kind of. Put something on their resume, I mean, you have to really, you really have to work at it, right?
Yeah, you definitely do. Um, one of the, of the board members mentioned, he says, do not come on with an agenda. You gotta know that you're here for all students and have a, have a reason, have a purpose, what is their passion? And I always, you know, one of our new board members that started, he says, I'm considering and I said, alright. Can you give me a reason why you want to run for school board? And I says, the reason why I say that is because, uh, you know. Yeah, there, there are gonna be challenges, but you, that's gonna be your main purpose is to go back to why you're running for school board and. The passion that we have for advocating for students, I think is the biggest thing. And like you had mentioned in our, in our traditional concept of eh and kinship, I think that's really is the foundation. To educate our, ourselves as board members, but more so educate and be a voice for children in our communities. And I find that kinship has really gone. To a deeper level of knowledge and understanding the work that we do or that I do and we, I say we as my other fellow board members. Um, is giving our, our Native American children an opportunity to expand their knowledge and have. An opportunity to be heard and then also. Um, just. I, gosh, I feel like I'm speechless, but in reality, it's about giving back to your community in reality. I feel like it was more so co- um, giving back to our community, um. But it is, I mean, there's a lot of good things, I've learned a lot. My family's always telling me, Desiree, I think you're spending too much time. Um, with school board, it's time that you step down, but the thing is, I am like, no, you can't tell me to step down. The reason being is because I've learned so much in my leadership role and I've learned how to have a stronger voice. I've learned how to advocate, networking is like my biggest favorite thing. I love to socialize, I love to talk. But you know, more so, you know, what's working in other school districts that I can, you know, that our school can benefit from. And getting to understand the, you know, the difference in rural schools and urban schools and just getting to know people out. In the community in general and for me, it's always just been about page, um, I felt like for a while there, but now that I'm. On the, I guess I made that approach as on the um Hispanic Native American Caucus. It just opened my eyes to understand the Hispanic and the Native American perspective, but now being able to serve on the executive board, it's. A broad overview of all schools across the state of Arizona and being able to advocate at the national level. So I think it is so, so important for me that I felt that it was important to see and to bring those. Opportunities back to our school district to benefit our students.
Yeah, I always keep, when I, whenever I've, you know. Been a leader or the head of something, so as Director of Indian Education for the Office of Indian Education. As the CEO and founder of the Southwest Institute for the Education of Native Americans. A nonprofit organization I founded and now as the leader of Sun Clan Consulting, it's always about the mission, it's always about your vision. It's what you were trying to, and, and you always have to connect back to that and what, as I told people. Uh, you know, when I would do trainings, the adults, so you have to remember it's about the kids, you're here to serve the kids, not each other. You know, so it's, that's good to hear. That perspective, but you're right, you have to get back to it, otherwise you can really go astray. You know, go down some road that you weren't intended to, to go down. So that was one of my, gonna be one of my questions was how have you benefited from this type of work, but I think we're running a little short on time and I want to get to some of the other questions. But I know that you just answered that, because you don't want to leave because you've learned so much, you continue to learn and. I'm a lifelong learner, Joe clearly is, he's still in school and he's already gone through, you know, different. Uh, careers and educational levels and all of that, so, um. I imagine that's some of the benefit you're al- you're also feeling, Joe, we know, you just told us. It's a big learning curve, but you're on it. You're learning, you're attending a conference, you're gonna learn those acronyms. Uh, I was in the same boat, you know, when I went to the department, it's like, what does that, does that stand for? What does that mean? I'm asking the person next to me. So, um, we came up with the, one of the first things I did was come up a list of acronyms and what they stood for. So that you can hand that out to new people who don't know what you're talking about. So, um, how about this one? How, what are your goals for the schools you serve? Do you have anything specific that you're trying, you know, Desiree talked about an agenda? I don't want to call, categorize it that way, but what goals do you have? Have you found a goal or more than one? Uh, for Kanta Unified that you didn't. Or that you, we want to achieve as a school board member?
For me, I, I want to be able to bring more outside partnerships. Whether they be companies, universities, uh, just more like role model speakers. And I guess gateway opportunity programs to the school because. I would say something that I really benefited from that opened my eyes to the world were. All the various types of summer programs that I was able to attend and at the summer programs, you always had other. Like um motivated speakers and companies that would find creative ways to uh pique. The, the interest in the kids' minds and when I was an exeter. I, and, and exited for people, Phillips Exeter Academy is an exeter in New Hampshire, so that's the New England area that I was referring to earlier. So I went to some summer programs there and then I went to the fifth year, uh, as like a fifth year senior, it's called a postgraduate year. And the people, the connections that I was able to make there, I was able to do summer programs and. I was able to do uh partnership programs at like Harvard Medical School. Um, Brigham and Women's Children Hospital right there in Boston, New Hampshire. I was able to have experiences out, you know, on Cape Cod, I was able to do things. Um, at, at MIT right there in Cambridge, so these were schools that, some of them I had heard of, some of them I didn't. But when I got to realize how like the resources some schools have that, because they had the money, because they. Had that legacy of, of students. Places like Kienta, K U S D on the reservation, they may not have that opportunity now, but they can in the future with the right type of. Uh, thinkers and creative mindset people and I was thinking, you know what? I wish they could have there, they should have that, but then I thought, maybe I could be somebody that can help, you know, instigate some of that change. Uh, so, so that's something that I feel is something that could open up more doors for places like, you know. Rural um schools on the reservation.
Yeah, those are wonderful goals and I was thinking about that when you were talking about your different experiences, how lucky. The school board is or Kanta schools and uh all the students are to have someone like you on the board. Um, because that, that I feel that's rare, you know, so many of us go to college and don't finish. Uh, you know, or, or, and, and they don't finish because it's such a culture shock. To go from a reservation community to a university and they don't have that, that support system like they have at home. So oftentimes that takes them back home and then they never leave or get to experience certain things, but you have and. You're living proof that you can do that and survive and come back home, you know, that it, it, you know, it can happen, you can still stay connected to your community. Um, so that, that's very important. Is there anything else you wanted to share about that, Desiree?
I do, um, you had mentioned that you, um, Joe, I kind of can relate there, so as. With my kids, um, they went to school here in Page and then we did a little bit of schooling in the valley where it was majority. Hispanic culture, so. We kind of just blend in, which was nice, then we went to New Mexico for a little bit and there it was like one hundred percent native. Or Navajo students, so of course, you know, my boys blend right in, then we moved to California, Torrance, California. And the unique thing there was that there was probably about ninety-nine percent Asian culture. I mean, just the Asian, um. Culture was just amazing at this particular school that my boys attended and the culture wasn't only like celebrated once, you know. Once a year or something, but there it was celebrated year round and it was amazing. To understand that students really thrive the knowledge of um Native American history. And once they found out, the students found out that my boys were, you know, one hundred percent Native American, they wanted to know more about. The Navajo culture and so they says, we only read one paragraph in our history book and we want to know more. So that really got me thinking as a mom and like, okay, my boys kept coming home, mom, these, my classmates want to know something about our culture. So, everything that I took for granted here at home. I ended up having to like dig and dig into our roots and our culture, our language and it really got me to open my eyes. As um, as an individual, I say, because um I said, okay, I'll teach them this, but I can't teach them that because I gotta teach them this. But pretty soon I was like pulling our roots back out and you would think cultural shock would have happened at these other schools. But cultural shock happened when we returned back to Page Middle School. It was sixth grade year, sixth grade is when we came back, um, our intention was to move back to California, but um. Native American Heritage Month came, the boys wanted to dress up in their traditional attire, so I allowed them. But at the same time, I knew in back of my mind that my boys were gonna be. Coming home in a different perspective, understanding and at the end of the day, picked them up and they says, I don't want to dress up in my traditional clothes anymore. I don't want to be Navajo, I don't want to be, you know, everything that we, I worked to help my boys understand their true identity and culture. Was just stripped all in that one day, they said, students just bullied us, students called us medicine man, students, you know, it was just. A horrible experience and so for that reason, my biggest goal is to continue to advocate for our Native American students. And really get more culture and language in our school district. and really get more culture and language in our school district. We finally got, um, Navajo language, um, passed through the board to have Navajo language be taught at our primary school and intermediate school. Cause currently, right now, we only have it at the middle school and high school. So it is five years ago before I started on the school board, students, when I dressed up in my traditional clothes and I was working as a paraprofessional, students would see me and this is what they would do, it's like, she's Navajo. And it's like they were whispering, she's Navajo. And I say, yeah, it's a Bennett, she's talking to us in, in Navajo, she's saying good morning. And I just thought, why are kids not opening up and speaking clearly? And you know, just really ta- taking ownership of who their true identity is. So from then on, I continued to dress in my traditional clothing and I, and I'm seeing the wave of change happening. Um, our Navajo language program is amazing here at Page High School. We have an amazing Navajo language teacher, Carlos Pague. And it's just been amazing to see where things are currently at now to how they used to be. But that's like my biggest goal is to get more advocacy about the Navajo language and culture.
Yeah, that's such an important point that you make and such a sad story unfortunately, that your boys had to go through. That we all experience things like that from time to time, especially if we do leave our community. For myself, I experienced it on both sides being half and half. So, you know, for the non-natives out there who may be listening, we're not saying that we're perfect and we have a perfect community or that we're, we aren't prone to making mistakes as well. Um, because I would be treated differently being half white on the red and be treated differently being half native off the res. But it happened more on the res because off the res, I think people didn't see me as native because I didn't look like the other native people around me, you know, the, the, on the often people. I mean, I grew up in Tucson, although I'm from New Mexico, didn't look like them. And I didn't look the stereotype of, you know, the, the Italian actor or Mexican actor that you would see, you know, in old movies or westerns and stuff. I didn't look like them, so they didn't know what I was, so they didn't know how to be racist toward me, I guess. Um, but yeah, I mean, we, we do that too, we make mistakes too and we hurt each other too. But yeah, that's sad and that's something that we definitely need to, to make people aware of. And that, that paragraph in the, in the history book, it's not enough and it's not even accurate anyway. So that's part of my job is to try to get educators, especially who are not na- um, native to understand that these things impact our kids. So, um, I was gonna ask you how a person becomes a school board member, but that could take up more than the four minutes we have left.
I can answer that in a nutshell.
Okay.
Get in touch with your, so get in touch with your county, um, superintendent's office. An example for Coconino County, it would be the Coconino Superintendent's Office. And you go right to their website and they usually have, um, information there. And election happen every two years, so election is gonna happen in 2022 and then of course in 2024. And you gotta be a member, a voting member in your school district. And also, I know that within Coconino County, gotta, you know, do some paperwork. And I noticed now they're actually doing background checks as well too that they've added. Cause we're actually gonna be, um, we have a vacant position at the moment, so I kinda looked into all of that. But so I encourage as many of you to get out and get your names into hat. I mean, it's definitely worth a try and definitely it's, yes, there's a learning curve, but more so I find that it is very enriching to volunteer and help out in your community and make a difference.
Yeah, so that might be a question someone has before they, they tried. You said it's volunteer, so you don't get paid to do this.
Yes, you do not get paid to do this. And that's a misconception all the time. Oh, you get paid, I'm like, I get paid with smiles and hugs. Yes.
Well, thank you for that. Uh, but I also did want people to know that Save Our Schools Arizona provides training on this, on how to become a school board member. So they also have other trainings and there's some, some recordings there of things that I've done in terms of, um, making people aware of the impact of, um, uh, private school vouchers on indigenous students. Um, so that's what Save Our Schools is about. If you're new to this, uh, Save Our Schools is about keeping those public tax dollars in our public schools. Instead of having them go out through, um, vouchers to go to, uh, to pay tuition at private schools. It's not always a good thing. Um, quite often we found that it's not. And you know, so there's, there's recordings on the Save Our Schools, so it's SOSAZ, um, dot org is the nonprofit site of Save Our Schools. So I would encourage you to go on the website to, to look at those, uh, trainings. But also, like I said, if you wanna, um, run for school board, there's trainings on that. You can contact Sharon Kirsh at sharon dot K I R S C H at ASU dot edu. So she's, um, one of the co, um, CEOs of Save Our Schools and, uh, she's also a professor at ASU, so hence the ASU address. So contact her and she can, uh, get you hooked up with that training. Um, so I just, I just really wanna thank you, you two, um, for being on today. I'm glad your, your internet stayed strong with us, Desiree. And all the way from Las Vegas, Joe's did too.
Thank you, Nadine. Thank you, Desiree.
It was great getting to know you guys a little bit better and, um, I just really appreciate your time. And you know, if there are any questions, please, uh, let us know. You can contact me also at Nadine at SOSAZ network dot org. Thank you, everybody. Take care.
Thank you. Good to meet you, Joe.
Thank you, Desiree.